Good evening, and welcome to the July eleventh, two thousand and twenty four, meeting of the Town of Lake Luzerne zoning Board of Appeals. Would please all rise and incite the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, would you call the roll?
Present.
Here.
I feel no.
Here.
Here.
When you hire.
Here.
Thank you. On this evening's agenda, we have a re-review of application two zero two four A V dash three Wayne Wagner ninety one Terrace Drive. Public hearing continuance, variance two zero two four A V dash one John Terlaga eighty three Family Drive. Public hearing for variance two zero two four A V dash four Tracy Smith four Seventh Avenue. And a new application variance two zero two four A V dash five sixty Bay Road. Also acceptance of minutes and new and old business. And with that, we shall get things started unless anyone has any questions. Okay. We started with re-review of application for area variance two zero two four A V dash three Wayne Wagner ninety one Terrace Drive requesting relief from front setbacks, side yard setback and separation from other structures for a garage. Um, we requested additional information at the last meeting. Um, it's my recollection that the application was not accepted. Is that correct, Karen?
Carl, do you needed more information?
Um, that information has been provided. The legal information has been reviewed by counsel. Uh, what is is, uh, Schedule A in your packet for parcel one three one seven one six dash seven dash one. It was a question of as to what the exact parcel number was, whether it was one six one dash seven or six. That has been corrected to the satisfaction of counsel. Uh, also been provided with a map showing the location of the adjacent properties. Um, as far as I am concerned, we have been provided with the additional information to allow us to proceed forward and complete review of the application. Does anyone disagree? Okay, so with that. We had gotten through the review, right Karen?
Yes.
It was just the questions on the end of the review that counsel questioned the deed reference.
Correct, and you wanted the, um, additional map, additional map.
Um, we have the map, we have the deed information. Um, unless someone would like to go through the application all over again. I have no reason to do that.
We make a motion to approve as submitted with all the additional information.
And I will second that.
Roll call vote?
Please.
Matt?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
Sonia?
Yes.
Hearing on the motion carried.
Make a motion to set a public hearing for area variance. That's one two zero two four A V dash three. Wayne Wagner ninety one Terrace Drive for August eighth at seven oh five P M.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call vote?
Please.
Matt?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
Sonia?
Yes.
Hearing on the motion carried.
Alrighty.
Good, thank you.
No problem, easy ones first. Second, on the agenda is a public hearing or continuation of the public hearing for area variance two zero two four A V dash one John Terlaga eighty three Family Drive. Distance between structures variance applicant requesting to leave public hearing open for another month. Uh, I know Karen, you told me that he had provided you a reason.
Um, he sent me an email and it reads, this is John Terlaga and letting you know I will not be attending this month's meeting due to circumstances beyond my control. Please keep my variance open. Thank you. That was dated July second.
Um, I have no reason not to leave this hearing open for another month. Any objections?
No. Make motion to leave the public hearing open for another month?
Second.
Roll call vote?
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hearing on the motion carried.
Public hearing area variance two zero two four A V dash four Tracy Smith four Seventh Avenue requesting relief of two front yard setback requirements and separation from other structures retaining walls. Karen, would you read the public notice?
Yep, let me just get down to it in my file here.
Well, that public hearing will be on the same date at eight twenty four?
Yes.
Okay. Please take notice that pursuant to the zoning ordinance of the Town of Lake Luzerne, the Zoning Board of Appeals will conduct a public hearing on July eleventh, two thousand and twenty four at seven oh five P M at their regularly scheduled meeting. The meeting will be held at Municipal Complex five thirty nine Lake Avenue, Town of Lake Luzerne to hear comments on the following. Area, area variance two thousand and twenty four A V dash four applicant owner Tracy and Thomas Smith. Parcel number two ninety eight nineteen dash one dash seventy nine. Hamlet Residential Zone H R point twenty six acres, location four Seventh Avenue. The applicant has applied for three variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Two variances are for, are for relief from local law number three of two thousand and nineteen, section four retaining walls, which references Article Six. General Regulations Accessory Buildings B three A front yard setback is of sixty feet is required. They are a corner property and they are proposing a retaining wall that is thirty five feet off Seventh Avenue and a retaining wall that is fifty one feet off Circular Street. The third variance is for relief from Article Six General requirements accessory buildings and uses B three C, which states that structure cannot be closer than ten feet to any other structure. They are proposing abutting the, the foundation, abutting to, abutting the foundation and going beneath an existing deck. A copy of the application as well as other supporting documentation are on file with the Office of the Zoning Officer and may be reviewed by interested members of the public during normal business hours, Monday through Thursday, eight thirty A M to four P M and Friday nine A M to four P M. All interested parties and citizens will be given an opportunity to be heard in respect to the proposed variance at the public hearing. Any interested parties and citizens may respond by letter, email, or appear in person. Karen Putney, zoning officer, et cetera, with my email and phone number, published July second.
And with that, I will open the public hearing for area variance two zero two four A V dash four. Smith, Tracy and Thomas parcel number two nine eight one nine dash one dash seven nine four Seventh Avenue. Karen, have you received any?
Yes, I have received two, um, emails. I also received back in the mail, two of the notices that I sent out once, one is to the property. Um, it's addressed to Hadley Luzerne, um, Junior Baseball Incorporated with a Hadley address that got returned. And then the property that is, if I can peel this off. It's Aben Abbottantino Estate, that one got returned as well. So the two emails that I received are to Karen Putney. This is from Rich Dawson. It was dated July ninth. I am a homeowner at ten Seventh Avenue, Lake Luzerne. Please allow our variances requested by the Smiths as they have taken a broken down house and transformed it into a beautiful home. They have not done anything. They have done everything with thought, skill, and sweat, and the house is an asset to our community. I also received one on July ninth from Rich and Denise Maraglia. Attention Karen Putney, Ms. Putney, thank you for spending time with us regarding the application for variance for the three violations of code for the property located at four Seventh Avenue and submitted to the zoning board by Tracy and Tom Smith. As neighbors to the property adjacent to this parcel, we view their application as reasonable. The Smiths have dedicated significant time and resources to this property and have greatly enhanced its appearance and value. However, somewhat concerning is the fact that the above violations were discovered after the Smiths submit submitted an application for a short term rental for this property, something that we suspected was in the offing, offing, but were led to believe that the by the Smiths that the property was to serve as a camp. We have reservations as to the granting of a short term rental permit and wish to be notified of the zoning board's deliberation in this matter. However, the short term rental permit is not part of this variance.
I am aware of that.
Okay.
Uh, as I show the other board members are aware. Uh, anything else, Karen?
No, that is all I have.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this matter? Then I will close the public hearing for area variance two zero two four A V dash four. Smith, Tracy and Thomas parcel number two nine eight one nine dash one dash seven nine. Well, excuse. This application is seek or exempt. Uh, there is no county impact. The A P A has advised the, the applicant that they do not have, they do not want to do a jurisdictional inquiry. Uh, with that, I'd like to get into the application. I'm assuming that all the information on the first page is correct. On page two, brief history of the property. We purchased this property on August first, two thousand and twenty one. From our understanding, the property has been vacant for many years. According to our neighbors, it was in a state of disrepair for decades. It was a neighborhood eyesore. And we don't have any questions on that. Description proposed action, relief from front yard setback on Seventh Avenue. Relief from front yard setback on Circular Street. Relief from separation from other structures. Response to questions for variance standards. Question number one. Describe how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Response is this retaining wall is contained on our property, does not interfere with surrounding roads or neighboring property in any way except for relief sought from this variance. Um, I have been to the property a couple of times. Uh, I agree that does not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Ray?
I drove by it and it does not alter the character or any of that stuff of the negative action.
Mike?
I feel the same. When I went to the property, I feel that it does not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or surrounding area.
Kayla?
I agree. I didn't see any negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood.
Sonia?
And I agree also. I see nothing negative.
Question number two, describe what alternatives would have been explored to achieve a solution others than a variance. We thought we would just possibly have grass. The slope was too steep for ingress and egress. Well, I guess that's an alternative. Uh, you could either slope it or terrace it, put in a retaining wall. So they have considered an alternative as the solution others than a variance. Ray?
I agree. That's it. I mean, grass or shares to help.
Mike?
I feel that they have, uh, looked at alternative solutions and explored what they could.
Kayla?
Uh, yeah, I agree. That's an alternative solution.
Sonia?
I agree also.
Question number three, explain whether this requested variance is substantial. Response is the front yard setback from Circular is not substantial. The front yard setback from Seventh Avenue and separation from other structures is substantial. Oh, yeah, the separation from other structures is substantial because according to our regulations, it can't be in contact with the foundation of the building. So.
That's, that's the separation, okay?
Right, that's the separation. Um, the front yard setback is sixty feet is required. Karen, do you know what the actual deviation is?
Um, what I have in front of me, one says it's thirty five feet to Seventh Ave and fifty one feet to Circular Street.
That's what was written in the public hearing notice.
Thank you. I agree that some of the requested variances are substantial. Ray?
They're substantial. It looks like you guys, they just built up the three. They didn't really take anything out, right? You built it up.
You're allowed to come up to the table and answer their questions. Just come up.
That was good.
Oh, okay.
Remember that question, right?
Mike?
Um, separation is definitely substantial. Uh, front yard setbacks are substantial, but with there's two front yards there on a very tight lot, which make it difficult to be able to do much. Yeah, the requested variances are substantial.
Kayla?
I agree. Um, coral lots get tricky. Um, but I would say they're substantial.
Sonia?
I think the variances are substantial.
Question number four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Response is this is a corner lot. We have no neighbors directly to the front on Seventh Avenue or on to the side on Circular. We kept the natural slope. We're not redirecting any water source. Groundwater will flow as it originally did. I do not see that the requested variance is going to have any adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Ray?
I do not believe any three of the variants is will have any negative impact.
Mike?
Yeah, I feel that need any of the variances would have a negative impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood.
Kayla?
Um, I don't see any negative impact on the neighborhood from any variance.
Sonia?
I see no negative impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood either.
Question number five, five. Describe how the requested variance is not a self-created difficulty. Response is we found there to be no other suitable means of ingress or egress. I have a foot injury, which does not allow me to climb a slope without a flat path safely. We also have several family members either in wheelchairs or using walkers. We felt to keep in the natural slope and tearing as it was tearing us it. So there was resting places along the way was our best option. We reside in the Town of Colony, New York. Tom is a mason. He has built countless retaining walls there. They have no setbacks or regulations. We truly thought we were doing the, this the right way. Um, that being said, there are very few of these that are not self-created. Uh, so my response to this is the variance is a self-created difficulty. Ray?
Yeah, every variance is self-created, so.
Yep. Yeah, my response is that it's a self-created difficulty.
Kayla?
Self-created.
Sonia?
Self-created.
Is there anything additional you'd like to say, Mrs. Smith?
I, no, I don't think so. I think what I just meant there is that we, we were down here constantly checking everything out and we truly, obviously, we didn't know that or we wouldn't have done it, but, um, we really didn't, we just didn't think we needed one. We just thought we were, we had, we actually thought we had to do it because of the erosion, I guess.
I can attest to the fact that through their process of buying this house and renovating it, they were down asking questions frequently and getting the permits that they required up to this point. And as she said, she didn't realize that they needed to get a permit for the retaining laws.
I personally, I don't have any issues with the looks, the environmental impact. Uh, and I don't have any issues with the setbacks based on the, the size of the lot and the location. Uh, the separation of the retaining wall from the primary structure, which is the largest deviation, uh, largest requested substantial variance. Uh, I, from my personal perspective, one of the reasons we look at these is so we can consider them on an individual basis. I don't see that running that retaining wall up to the foundation of the house, the way it is, has any net negative impact. It's not affecting drainage, not affecting the look of the neighborhood. And that is just my perspective on it.
It's not like they went in and dug a bunch out. It's bad when people go in and dig a bunch out, expose the foundation, but if you look at it, it already had windows exposed all the way around. So all the new was free to build in. So. See any problem with any three of the variances?
Yeah. And that's not, that's not a bad thing, bringing Phil in up there with water issues that do come off of the heights and just creating more ground to soak up water.
Kayla, you have anything additional?
Um, not anything else that hasn't been said. I, I don't see any issues. I think the fact that it doesn't um, change the drainage is, is probably one of the biggest concerns I would have had, and it doesn't, so that that seems fine for me.
Sonia, anything additional?
No, I'm good.
I'm going to. Make a motion to accept area variance two zero two four A V dash four Smith, Tracy and Thomas parcel number two nine eight point one nine dash one dash seven nine se- four Seventh Avenue. To accept all three variances.
You mean approve, right?
Approve, yes, sorry. Approve all three variances. The variance, the setback variances and separation distances from the, the existing structure.
I will second that motion.
Roll call vote?
Please.
Matt?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
Sonia?
Yes.
Hearing on that motion carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're so.
Okay, I appreciate that.
The next item on the agenda is a new applica- application area variance two zero two four A V dash five sixty Bay Road requesting relief from front yard setback, ten foot separation between structures. And because this parcel is split by the, by the road, this accessory structure does not have a principal structure to be accessible to on the riverside of the road. Mr. Harkins? Come on up and have a seat. So please tell us what you're looking to do.
So I'm looking to build a canopy on my shorefront. Um, it's a smaller than a hundred square feet. Um, strictly for shade. It's a, uh, it's four poles and a roof.
Well, that's pretty simple.
Yeah.
Anything additional?
Um, first time doing this, so I'm, I'm not exactly positive, so I, I.
Okay, so at this, at this meeting, we are, we are just reviewing your application for completeness and making a decision as to whether to accept the application.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So, yeah, so I, I've I'll give, I'll make the long story short as I can. I had a, uh, before this, I had a structure. Um, almost ten by twenty. I bought the house in two thousand and six. Um, in two thousand and eleven, it was destroyed when we got the big flood that hit up to the road. Um, four or five years ago, I, uh, redid the waterfront, did all the applications through D C A P A. I came to the town. They sent me to those folks over there. Um, I had that done. Um, town back then, none of you were here, told me they don't need to review it. They're fine as long as A P A approves all that and D C approves that. Um, so I got all those permits. I had Arondek Industries do the work, um, and I've just gotten around to trying to build this new structure that is on the property. I've had a ten by twenty garage tent up there that the wind likes to take and stab people with poles about twice every summer, if you know the area, like I'm sure you all drive right by. It's the speed, the speedway between Stewart's and the Luzerne Market. So, um, I'm just trying to make something look a whole lot better. Um, I see in your packet, you, you'll see the drawings. I don't see, I had fourteen or fifteen neighbors write emails to, to me and support as well. Um, again, I don't know how that process goes, so.
That information will be presented to the public.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, you know, it's a tough piece of land because there are not, it's narrow. Um, so it doesn't, that, that's what the variance is for here. Um, the A P A told me if I get it down under a hundred square feet, they would approve it. Um, and the Warren County, uh, I was sent to them as well, and they sort of gave me the same exact answer back.
Okay, I don't have any questions from Mr. Harkins.
It's already up, isn't it?
Um, it's up and down. It is not as large as it used to be.
Yeah.
Correct?
That's correct.
Your.
It's about eight by ten.
Your original one before the flood was larger, right?
It was what?
Larger?
Yeah, it was ten by twenty.
All right.
And like the A P A in Warren County, they all told him okay? And the town told him okay?
The town.
Didn't tell me.
Town didn't tell him okay. Um, A P A's regulations are that if it's, and, and it's in your packet, their letter, if it's less than a hundred and hundred square feet, they don't, and within the shoreline, they don't have any, um, they don't govern them. They don't, you know, make anyone get a permit. So that's why you cut the size down so that it wouldn't have to, um, you know, go for variance with A P A. And I don't know what the county told him. I don't know who you talked to at the county.
I'm just wondering. I remember when the guy did this. And it was a pretty big project in town traffic stop for a long time. I'm sure a lot of people seen it happen and knew it happened. Why is it on our plate in two thousand and twenty four in the zoning board? Why is this poor guy here?
He just, he's rebuilding it. He's putting, it's a new.
So this isn't built, like this isn't already up?
It is now, but he started doing it without a permit. And as you know, originally, if it was a hundred and forty four square feet or more, he, uh, I'm sorry, a hundred and forty four square feet or less before two thousand and nine, the end, before November two thousand and nineteen, he didn't need a town permit for an ancillary structure, but they in that local law, they changed. in that local law, they changed that and they now make people get permits for ancillary structures and they have to meet the same setbacks as an accessory structure.
Oh, so this bill, this isn't already up?
Well, I I started building it without a permit, because that's what I was told.
So it's less than a hundred square feet that A P A is he reduced, this was the original structure, that portion has been removed.
Okay, I understand.
No, I understand. I understand. Uh, so Mister Harkins, you do have response from the county? Are you waiting for a response from the county?
County sent me an email telling me that they would have no problem if it was a hundred square feet, but they were waiting for your decision. That's not in your packet. That was on an email, which
Is that Warren County building codes that you were?
It's the guy, Chris, what, the name you sent me? I I forget. Yes.
Okay, yeah, if it's under a hundred and forty-four square feet, you won't have to get a permit with them.
That's sort of what he said.
Yeah.
Uh, could you forward that email from Mister McKinney to Karen, please? So we have that on record.
Where it's just getting sticky is like, the county's not going to require a permit, but our local laws are not liking a piece of land without a principal structure, right?
Correct.
Right, and he doesn't need the setbacks.
But the the, the piece of property is split by the road. You got a very tough spot up there, you are, because you're all all hill street right behind you and then your road and drop down to the river.
Right now, people have have structures there as well.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Parcel that he's only care because it's split by the road?
His house is across the road.
What makes it a separate parcel?
The in zoning ordinance.
Our ordinance. No, the same
No, it is the same.
I spent, I spent considerable a lot of time today with Karen and Chris discussing the exact same points.
Doesn't have the watching and all, you know, but it's it's pretty impressive, you know, it's tricky work in the corner.
Yeah, that that guy's an artist, if you know who the guy's goes, uh, he's done a ton on the river.
Parcels divided by a right of way, a parcel which is divided by a public right of way shall be considered as two parcels with the same taxman identification.
Yeah. The second parcel is is too small to meet any setbacks for an act construction. Okay, off the subject. Anyone else have any questions from Mister Harkins? I'd like to review the application.
That's the house.
Because that can be another thing that we bring up to talk about when they change it.
Uh, we're looking for Article Five dimensional requirement, dimensional table, front yard setback is sixty feet of variance from that. General reg- regulations for accessory buildings. And the, there needs to be, next, need to be accessory to a principal building. And this, the ten foot separation between structures.
And that's, that comes into play with the retaining wall that's there, that exists on that property.
History of the property, I have owned the house, my wife Melissa, since two thousand six. We redid the waterfront about five years ago, permitted through D E C. But an existing structure built in two thousand seven on the property that was destroyed during the huge flood in two thousand eleven. Since that time, we have used a ten by twenty foot tent that is not very stable. And one question on the history of the property. Description of the proposed action, we want to build a ten by ten. Uh, Mister Harkins, is it ten by ten or ten by eight?
Well, when I had to figure it out and not take the post out, it's ten by eight. There's a drawing in here.
Okay, I would like to, if it's your approval, I'd like to amend this with application from ten by ten to ten by eight.
To eight, eight feet, eight inches is what I have on the drawing.
Eight feet, eight inches. On with no sides, we were told that even though this was my property, the separated, separated by roads, so I needed a variance to obtain a permit. Unfortunately, the rules changed in town that we did not know about. When I fixed the waterfront, I went to town and was told I did not need to approve anything and go to D E C and A P A, which I did. I was simply replacing the structure that was there in two thousand seven. I am asking for a variance now to build a, and again, I'm going to change this to ten by eight feet, eight inches canopy. The A P A said they would approve this if it was, if it was a ten by ten structure. Uh, that letter is attached in the packet. I have seen that letter. Any questions on the description of the proposed action?
Not to blow this whole thing up, but I think what it's saying here is that if your parcel is divided by a road, it can be in a different zoning district. I don't think this is saying you have to meet the setbacks if your parcel is divided by a road. I think it's just saying you can be in a different zoning district. So like if this structure wasn't permitted in whatever, like, say the house is in one zoning district and the road is here and another zoning district is here. If he couldn't put the structure in that zoning district, that's what it's saying. It's not saying he needs to meet the setbacks. Does that make sense?
If that's your interpretation, it makes sense.
I'm, because it's under the establishment of districts and maps article, not the
Wouldn't that be the map then, that we're talking about?
I guess that's, what, I guess that's what I'm saying, like on a zoning map, they're just saying that if your parcel is separated by a road, it can be in a different zoning district.
The zoning map have parcel boundaries as well as zoning boundaries?
I would assume so.
So if he wants to build a structure on this parcel, he doesn't have to meet this front yard setback? He could have it right up to the road?
That I don't know. What, all I'm saying is I think this is still considered one parcel. Even though it's separated by a road.
Okay.
In terms of your setbacks and, but I don't know the setbacks enough to know if he would meet those anyway. I don't think the road matters in this circumstance.
It really is. Like, let's say you needed like four acres to have the proper amount of like bedrooms in the house, and you bought the property across the street and joined them, then you would have the right amount of, it, it, so I, I understand what you're saying, because I've seen that situation happen where people like buy property across the street.
Right.
To
I think this is specific to your zoning districts and how they're created. This provision about that.
So that would be like the second, the second one without a
So how would, how, how do you establish the setback?
I think you have to consider it all one parcel. I don't, but I don't know, like, I'm not versed enough to know how you would do that considering it all one parcel.
Does that mean?
Or is this provision also in the setback provision?
Let's look at that. It will begin the definition of setbacks.
So the only setbacks I believe we need to worry about are from the water.
And he doesn't have to worry about that because under a hundred square feet, he doesn't have to meet that in the shoreline portions. Well, that would be great news.
Yeah, I, I agree with you all.
Yeah, it looks better than what we have here. So here speaking a, let me get my bearing. Front yard setback, ten feet separation between structures, what does that mean?
That's because it's so close to that retaining wall and we did have a discussion about that re- the retaining wall issue keeps coming up, so it's something that we're going to have to look at, but
Why do we think our retaining wall is a structure?
Because that's
We defined it as such.
Local law. For the retaining wall, it says that it's a structure. It's in definitions.
It's in, it's in the, the, uh, the revision was, that was in December of of twenty nineteen.
I know, it needs to be changed.
Hold on, hold on. Alright, so the definition of accessory structure didn't change though, correct?
Correct.
accessory structure is defined as any building or structure which affixed to land or any movable structure in excess of a hundred and forty-four square feet. This isn't in excess of a hundred and forty-four square feet?
But, so it's an ancillary structure. Which is in that, what, local law number three, you now have to meet the same setbacks as an accessory structure for an ancillary structure. I wish you'd been lawyer back then.
But, but the retaining wall wouldn't be an ancillary structure or an accessory structure. Any building or structure affixed to land or any movable structure which is incidental, subordinate to and associated with a permitted principal structure.
Retaining wall is defined in the
They're not defined us, they're using that term, which I think was just a bad use of the term. So, hold on, it's got a structure. Any object constructed and sold or placed on or land, facilities, land use and development or subdivision of lands such as buildings, sheds, single-family dwellings, mobile homes, signs, tanks, ski tour jump, and any fixtures, additions or alterations there too. Landscaping features and fences shall not constitute structures. So I don't think a retaining wall is a structure. And then if it's not a structure, it can't be an accessory structure.
Is
That's it, wouldn't be able to
Is the retaining wall considered to be a landscaping feature? Because it's, it's not landscaping. I mean, it's, it's structural, it's there to hold, it's, it's, it's not to make the bank pretty, it's to keep the bank from falling down.
Like patio lot. I think we should like, like executive session for a couple of minutes and have him hang outside the door for just like five minutes. Can I make a motion for that?
Certainly.
Kind of make a motion to go in an executive session?
It's actually, um, client attorney privilege section, session is what you want.
Tell me how to say it and I'll say it.
Attorney client privilege.
Can I make a motion to go in attorney client privilege session? I'm sorry, it'll just run five minutes, like, go up there and do this.
Are you related to Freddie Zubal?
What? He's my father.
He worked on my property.
No, all in favor, aye, opposed.
We'll come get you one word.
So if you go to definition
Yes.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
So maybe it took a little more than five minutes.
That's our thing.
As a result of our discussion, we are removing the requirement for there be needed to be a principal structure to have an accessory structure or an ancillary structure in this case. So we're now looking at two variances. One is the front yard setback of the request for 40 feet rather than 60 feet. And then there's the variance from these 10 foot separation requirements between structures. So we've gotten rid of one of the three variants that you're looking at. That being said, we'll get back into the document. I believe we were
Question one.
Question one, the variant standards. Describe under requested variance will not alter the character's larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. The response is the variance will not alter the appearance of the neighborhood at all. It is on my property and replaces something that was larger installed there previously. It is also removing an eyesore and I had in that I had a 10 by 20 foot tent there the last five years, which is less safe than they proposed structure. I believe the question is answered rail.
Questions answered.
Mike.
Questions answered.
Kayla.
Questions answered.
Sonia.
Question is answered.
Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than a variance. The response is there are no alternatives due to the location other than the tent to provide shade. Questions answered rail.
Questions answered.
Mike.
Questions answered.
Kayla.
Questions answered.
Sonia.
Question is answered.
Question number three, explain whether this requested variance is substantial. Responses, the request of the variance is minimal best does not affect anyone and is not an eyesore, does not impede anyone's business or property, has no sides or utilities. Questions answered rail.
Answered.
Mike.
Questions answered.
Kayla.
Questions answered.
Sonia.
Question is answered.
Question number four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. The response is answered above, no impact, simply a canopy. Question is answered rail.
Questions answered.
Mike.
Yeah, questions answered.
Kayla.
Questions answered.
Sonia.
Question is answered.
Question number five, describe how the requested variance is not a self-created difficulty. Response is there is no self-created difficulty, simply trying to provide shade to my family on a piece of property I purchased and pay taxes. Question is answered unless anyone disagrees, I won't, I won't fall with a single one of you understand me?
Questions answered.
Does anyone have any additional questions from Mr. Harkins regarding his variance request?
No.
Motion to accept area variance 2024 AV dash five Vincent Harkins parcel number 298.19 dash one dash 5060 Bay Road. As amended, thank you.
I'll second that.
Please. Matt? Yes.
Rail?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
Sonia?
Yes.
Karen on both.
Motion to set up public hearing for area variance 2024 AV dash five on August eighth, 2024. At seven oh five PM.
I'll second that motion.
We'll call both.
Please.
Matt?
Yes.
Rail?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
Sonia?
Yes.
Karen on that, but Karen.
So we have a public hearing established for August eighth. See her.
I have a question.
Now you do not have to be present for the public hearing.
That was the question, my oldest daughter is having her first baby, so probably won't be here.
Uh, you can have a representative here as long as you designate that representative to Karen in writing.
Does anyone have to be here?
Uh, no, it's
With the understanding though that you won't be here to defend
Understand, I will try my best to just figure it out.
Thank you. The grand review is more important.
Oh, then a zoning board meeting? I am crushed. Yeah, but that's just if they can't start before seven oh five.
Yeah. Thank you, O C Service, appreciate you.
Thank you for being patient with us.
Under accepting minutes, which is next item on the agenda, Chris has already informed us, he doesn't have the minutes ready from last week, last month's meeting, so there's nothing to accept. Under new and old business, Karen, anything exciting?
I don't have anything that I can think of that I need to bring up at this point.
Chris?
I'll say it for next month. I get the sense that we're down here. Put it in an email.
Mary, anything new? I think Alan Williams. Anyone else?
Nope.
Well.
Not yet, I'm kidding.
Uh, we did get a response from the state of New York regarding the contract for the fifty, forty-five thousand dollars from the state who assist us in amending our zoning regulations. It is a quite detailed procedure and the state wants our contract completed by, I believe it is August eighth and sometime in the big, in the very beginning of August, uh, which I find interesting since we, we didn't get, you know, approved occasionally till this week. So it's a lot of work to be accomplished.
Well, I'm sorry.
Other than that, I have nothing additional.
I'm good.
Well, I did that during a real contentious part of the town board meeting.
I was, I was just trying to spread my word. Well, Mary severed it, so it wasn't just a moment.
Oh yeah, no.
Constantly stacked, so I want to shut off the channel.
The guy at the desk was not, not amused.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you all. Yes.